Good morning, everyone. November 12, 2019, 10:00 a.m., Tuesday. Welcome. If we could please rise and stand facing the flag for the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford, now progress. How many of you want to vote for Agent Ida?
Agent Ida. Any person may appear before the court this time to speak regarding any general issue or matter that is not on the agenda, comments, or leave in the three minutes. Permission of Commissioner Ford. And, uh, there, uh, here.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Just wanted to inform you that the auction went very well on Saturday. Approximately fifty-six thousand five hundred and fifty were generated from the auction, uh, the vehicles, and, uh, confiscated at the, uh, Sound Site Building, which is our association. Twenty of the vehicles that remain there are still, uh, we're waiting for the titles and release from our district attorney and federal, so we'll work with that. Uh, other figures or numbers, uh, of course, after the county, and I won't have those now together, but also, I understand, according to we have seventy inmates, six females. We've got one that was coming to court today. We talked to the judge, Garcia, and we, uh, not obvious that we may transfer this individual back to T D City. That is one of the problems. We have the kickoff meeting on the twentieth with Motorola, so we shall, as you know, the sheriff's office, uh, we're expecting, uh, everyone is invited. We're expecting to be there at ten thirty, day later. We are also, because of the weather, we're putting out policies to the public regarding the possible sale or the price tomorrow on the streets. Those, our officers will be moving from April to July.
Yes, sir. Uh, I just wanted to note, uh, everything was sold, including all of the excess furniture, correct?
Yes, they, they, uh, we should have, yeah, was there. Uh, Mr. Lozano was there.
And that was just something we had to do, that way we don't have to move as much whenever we move out of there. All of the surplus or items, they're, they're sold, so that should be cleaned out completely without us having to be a problem. Uh, the next step is going to be for us to go ahead and get a count of boxes that need to be shredded. We'll shred those, that way when everything's clean, everything's moved, there'll be less boxes. But thank you very much for giving.
Well, I, I want to congratulate also Captain, not that he didn't have standing by in all big or way with apple thong and, and on ears. Uh, been in contact with Mr. Jason Best regarding the buildings, and I think one of them's already been placed at the location. We've got the obstetric guys working on that, and hopefully the old will come in. But at this point, uh, this is where we're at, uh.
The Motorola kickoff is when?
On the twentieth, that's on a Wednesday, which is for the Motorola, from Sheriff. Yeah, that's also going to be present. I know it was together, and I, my memo said the fourteenth, if they want to. Yeah, I think it will be the twenty. All right. Mr. Garrett has been involved with this on that. Of course, yesterday, we went to several, uh, gathering ceremonies where officers participated. Thank you all, and I'm sure you all do it for our business. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anyone else that wants to come up this time? Hmm? Anyone? Okay, Agent Adam number four, consider approving minutes from previous meeting.
I make a motion to the.
I second. I have a motion to the second on the floor, all those who favor say aye. All right, opposed, motion passes. Agent Adam number five, discuss and consider budget amendment request from Justice Department to transfer thirty-five hundred dollars from line item twelve, four fifty, four nine nine, six three printing and filming to twelve, four fifty, four eighty-six, made this software.
Judge, I looked at the request, and everything's fine.
I make a motion to approve, I am just present. Motion and then the second on the floor, all those who favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Number six, discuss and consider budget amendment request by County Judge Rodriguez Jr. to transfer twenty-five thousand from twelve, five ten, four forty, ten utilities dealt to twelve, five ten, five eighty, building improvements.
Judge, I looked at the request, and everything's okay, and we serve.
Motion, the second, all those who favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Number seven, discuss and consider budget amendment request from Justice of the piece piece one, which is the deal to transfer one hundred dollars from line item twelve, four fifty-one, four nine nine, three thirty-three, travel reimbursement inquest, a hundred dollars from line item twelve, four five one, forty-five, thirty, the ten years, and two seventy-nine from line item twelve, four fifty-one, four eighty, on premium total, four seven nine, twelve, four fifty-one, ten, office price.
Uh, I look at this, Judge, the only, uh, change I have is travel reimbursement inquest is twelve, four five one, four nine nine, two two. And everything else is okay.
With that stated, and that adjustment, or that, uh, amendment, I move the week. Motion to approve, a motion to.
Okay. The second.
Yeah, I move that, for the second. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. To the item rated, discussing consider budget amendment request from County Commissioner Roden Bridge, recent three calls, and so we're to transfer four thousand from twenty-three, six twenty-three, three fifty-four batteries, tires, and tubes to twenty-three, six twenty-three, four forty, utilities, five thousand from twenty-three, six twenty-three, four fifty-four, repairs of motor vehicles, fifteen thousand from twenty-three, six twenty-three, forty-six, fifteen, contract labor repairs, twenty-five thousand from twenty-three, six twenty-three, five seventy-three equipment, and twenty-five thousand from line item twenty-three, six twenty-three, five seventy-seven, motor vehicles total of seventy thousand to line item twenty-three, six twenty-three, three fifty-six, twenty, repairs material cold mix.
Judge, I looked at the request, and everything is okay, all the months are there.
I make a motion.
Second, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes. I, discussing consider budget amendment request from Commissioner Pacey to put out a tip to transfer fifty-nine dollars from line item twenty-two, six twenty-two, three fifty-six, ten, repair materials, damage to line item twenty-two, six twenty-two, three fifty-four, ten, repair parts.
Everything is okay.
I make a motion to approve, I am. Second, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Agent Adam number ten, discuss and consider authorizing funding for safety appreciation lunch, the new schedule for Monday, some. We authorize funding? Do we have money? No, we still haven't.
We will find money.
Okay. I move that we authorize the funding. Second, all those who favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes.
We can, uh, we can also say that we, we need to advertise for the.
We have, it's already come out in the paper, the hands and.
It needs to be part of the agenda.
Oh, okay. And what's that, your admin hygiene?
The menu, which should show up in the, in our website.
It's on the website.
Okay. Agent Adam number eleven, consider take action adopted burn ban for Jimos County, effective immediately. That's something interesting here. Mr. Garcia, your suggestion, you're still on to fix, uh.
I have an update, you know.
Okay.
Um, I did reach out to the border service again this morning since we've had recent rains. Um, our K V D I is still five sixty-six. Texas A and M border service has a threshold for burn bans at five hundred, so we're still above average as far as drought is concerned. About seventy percent of the county is still under a severe drought at this point, thirty percent under a moderate drought. For the month of October, we only received twenty-two percent of our normal rainfall, which is about a two and a half inch deficit across the area. Reached out to some of the, uh, fire departments, uh, over our little box of the burn ban, and, um, we did have about a twenty acre fire out in Orange Grove, so, I mean, as soon as the burn ban did last, you, the community did seize that opportunity. Uh, and we did have a couple of fires that did spread pretty quickly. Um, with the outbreak of the cold that we have right now, it is raining, uh, but keep in mind that these fronts are going to be more prominent as we go on through the line months. That means it's going to dry out, that means the top layer's going to dry out even further, and we still have the deficit of probably close to eight to twelve inches across there once town. Uh, so, as these fronts come in, and we do get some rain, um, it may dampen the top layer of the soil, but once the rain moves out and the cold weather sets in, the burn ban needs to be in place, because after that, um, wildfires are going to be pretty problematic as we head into winter. So, I do recommend that we get into the burn ban immediately.
Thank you, one Commissioner.
I make a motion to continue the.
Unless you have discussions, discussion. Okay, well, just wanted to remind everybody, especially the Sheriff's Department, is that they can make aware to the dispatch that there is exceptions.
Exception, yes.
And please, look at the exception before anybody goes up there and says, well, there's a burn ban. There is one, but there's exceptions.
Now, it's controlled, right?
So, please be aware of that.
You can do a control burn.
Yes, you just need to get approval with the sheriff's.
Believe me, you can.
Sheriff, you understand the process?
Yes, we do, Judge, you do. We've, uh, we've had several requests, and they've, you know, they've been honored and praised.
Okay, as long as we're on the same page there. When it's, uh, when it's going on, it's, uh, we got it all. Second, uh, motion to second, switch to one, thank you.
Will this be for ninety days, Michael?
By default, that's correct.
Mr. Queen, incorrect.
And in the event, um, we find that we don't have the need for it, can it come back to Commissioners?
Yes.
But, or does, say, the county judge have authority to, uh, end it? We'd have to come back to Commissioners?
I believe it.
Okay.
Yeah, if we do meet that threshold, then we can come back and reconvene and, and lift the ban if necessary.
Before the ninety days.
Before the ninety days, sir, correct. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to say, um, so what do you consider a controlled burn?
It's written, but during the, on the, on the.
There's parameters there, on the exceptions.
There needs to be, um, there was one that I, I went to, I believe the day that, or the day before the burn ban expired, and, uh, to do a prescribed burn, you need to have the approval of T C Q to do that. Um, if you're going to burn, you know, you can't burn tires or something like that, obviously, that's not right. But a controlled burn is more if you have brush piles, and you've taken precautions, and you, uh, taken dozers or.
And I think that should do also with the form, uh, the form egg. The form egg exception, you know.
And of course, there's weather parameters as well, you know, even with the prescribed burn, the prescribed burn is going to be taken off if the winds are going thirty or forty miles an hour. If, everything has to be perfect on that day in order for you, for that prescribed burn to continue to take place.
I have a question for Mr. Garrett. I was there in Fremont, and we have that burn area where we run all brush, the city is in charge of it. They keep saying that they have an exception, is that, you know anything about that?
I'm, I'm not sure. What they have, is that the incinerator machine?
Yeah.
What, what would that fall under, sir?
Well, if it's windy, you can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, by wind, it's windy, you can't do it, but they keep saying that they have an exception through the state, and I said, I can't allow, I, I haven't allowed it to happen, but we have allowed some to have cleared brush with twenty, thirty, fifty acres.
I'm not sure. I have to, I have to use the.
I don't, I don't see it.
They haven't been able to produce any information saying that they, they have. Okay, well, we'll look into it. I'm sure we're getting into the weeds.
I don't, I don't, I don't see it listed as an exception.
For municipality, you'd say, right?
Right, for, it says, it says, uh, federal or state government, but not local.
Not municipality, rural government. Maybe not? They would have to provide some kind of documentation or, you know, okay, so I want to make sure. Thank you, Mr. Queenio. Have a good day, sir. Number twelve, consider take action, adopt revised rules of procedure conduct from the Congress meeting of Jimos County Commissioners Court incorporating, incorporating the provisions of H B twenty forty as recommended by T E TAC.
Judge, this is the, basically, the rules that we already have in place. The only, uh, changes, uh, recommended by, uh, the law firm of Allison and Bass, which, uh, incorporate the new, um, the new directives that, that, that people don't have to come and talk during the open comment that's, at the beginning of the meeting, they can wait until the specific item is being considered and do it at that time.
And speak to the agenda item?
Yes, yes, before or during consideration. So, uh, everything else is pretty much the same as what we have, uh, before.
Commissioner Lozano, if you had a question regarding the Texas flag, is it this, or is it to or on?
It's this.
Because I was telling him that yesterday at the veteran's presentation, the R O T C base is this.
Well, the schools seem to do that quite a bit, but, uh, Mr. Ragland pointed out to us that there's a new Texas statute, well, I don't know how new it is, I think it's twenty-eleven, uh, that says.
What, what are, what are they do at the Capitol? The Senate and the Republican?
I'm not sure that they actually recite it there.
They might.
Uh, but, you know, the statute says it's, it's to be done when you hand over your heart, just like the United States, uh, place. And I think I printed it out, we can, I can print out some copies.
And no, really, it's the last official meeting boy came up, I had.
We can get it from here once and for all, because it's kind of, it's kind of, I don't know where this came from, because it's.
I think that's what the schools, uh.
Someone may misinterpret one day this thing about handing out the, you know, whatever it's going to.
Yeah, yeah, we've got it, it's, it's part, it's actually in the statute.
Okay, so, for all intensive purposes, to the heart.
Okay, there's the verification.
Uh, let's see, Agent Adam number thirteen, consider take action on.
I mean, I mean, a vote.
Yes. Oh, we need to vote on it? Yeah.
I make a motion to take action on the adopted revised rule.
Okay, I have a motion. And a second, all those who favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So, we had it already adopted, right? This is just a.
This is just the, the, the new item that, uh, House Bill twenty-eight forty.
All right.
Changed a couple of things regarding public comment.
That particular item for each agenda item, right, for the public. Number thirteen, consider take action, authorize Jimos County, I T, Department to sell us your YouTube and our Facebook account for Jimos County Commissioners Court for the purpose of live broadcasting of meetings.
Good morning, Judge. Hi, Robert. Uh, the reason why the press, uh, authorization we got to allow me to create and count, just solely for to present the line P every court, uh, audio, video, almost, Commissioner Court have done in the past, keep on, and right now. I'll go presenting the light presentation, unfortunately, I was unable to do that. So, because of the issue with the leak, so I'm working on, you know, how to crew in my P three weeks, and that, that's the only way to execute it, I'm doing that.
As the way the city does, the right is for you to. I make a motion to on the right, the I T.
I'll second. Second, all those who favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Number fourteen, discuss options regarding expiring lease with Los Aviles Investments O T B and office locations with the most likely practices.
One, Commissioner's Court, Michael Garcia, here to just do it, talk about that agenda item fourteen, and how this item affects my office. Um, someone asked that you at least take into consideration the position of my op, of my office, or in the event there's sort of discussions, that you all would at least include myself in your discussions. Um, as you, as a quarter's awareness, is the courtroom that is, um, used by my office for holding, it comes about county court and law business. At the end of this year, we would have had more than a hundred and thirty days of court in this office, in this courtroom. That means that, um, that is not included the J C's office, I know, that they're doing, that Canomie, Judge Fies, Judge Keemo, and, um, Judge Johnson also use this. Well, when people come to court, it's not only the litigants, you know, people always bring a support staff, and this, uh, courtroom only has the capacity to hold a certain number of people. So, what the office across the hall has become has been a holding cell for inmates, a holding cell for doin' outs, it's become a negotiation room for attorneys, and it's also been a waiting area for litigants, for their case to enter court, or for their families to wait while, uh, the courtroom is full for a minute, ten, yeah, before they're allowed to come in here. That has been done so that there's not an influx of people standing in the hallway. Um, as maybe y'all have seen, certain Thursdays, house support days, CPS days, we've had up to twenty, thirty, forty people standing in the hallway or sitting across. Consider my input or my opinion in your discussions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody?
I just want to say that, um, I don't see us bringing it back over here because, you know, one of the reasons was the traffic in the hall, uh, from the Texas, and, uh, also the, the parking, we don't have the parking, uh, and now that they have to go all the way around, it's even harder, so.
Well, we have to consider everything, and so this is going to be up for discussion, definitely. We'll take all that into consideration, but we're going to do what's best for, you know, we still have to speak to the Texas State Office, employees, we'll look at the traffic. Commissioners, we have to really look at this carefully, because, uh, this office, of course, I keep that in mind, which Judge Garcia brought it, or mentioned, as far as the traffic, but all of that we need to look at and see how that should be worked out, because the fact that the office out there is not centralized here, and there's been some concerns from the public and employees and other issues, so, uh, we've got that, you know, we just need to get it carefully, but the fact that we have to look at this, uh, lease that's up in February of twenty-ninth, or February of twenty, twenty? Commissioner, anybody else have any suggestions or comments or anything? What's, what's the, uh, amount of, we're paying for the rental, right?
Eighteen, one thousand eight hundred eighty-six, twenty-five per month, so eighteen, eighteen hundred eighty-six per month.
And that includes utilities, right?
I believe that's all in, yes, that, I don't know.
That's not including any, we don't do any maintenance, right?
No, but under your expense, you don't pay utilities.
Yeah, just a flat fee.
And that was up for renegotiation, like, are you going to stay flat that way?
Well, and, and that's why we're, that's why it's on the agenda, we, we need to discuss what the option.
We need to reach out to Aviles to see what the re, uh, or the term of the contract and see what.
We have an option, I don't know for what price, but we have a five-year option.
You know, uh, Mr. Science was telling me about that, but I, I didn't find it, but it's a, it's a pretty long contract. I've asked him if that is in there, to show it to me, because I, I didn't see it. Um, I know the original term was a five-year term, that's the one that's expiring here. And there's a holdover provision that if we don't move out by the end of February twenty-ninth, or negotiate a new lease, then the rent doubles, uh, to thirty-six hundred a month, or whatever eighteen eighty-nine times two is. So, that's why, and we're like, a little over ninety days out from that date, so it's something we need to start thinking about.
Uh, Mr. Lozano's not here to discuss this at all. No, she's not, that's why, the agenda item's here, but we got it going, so I guess we can, uh, look at those, uh, issues and. I know she's discussed before that she's wanting to come back over here, but I agree with Mr. Garcia, this is the room, this area's used a lot for the, uh, for the court, and also with Mrs. Lozano, that we're, we don't have the parking here, and we don't, closing the doors here, and just the west, west side, it's going to be hectic for the people trying to walk in here and visit the services. What I like about that building over there is it's round level, and it helps, it'll be walking in a lot easier than it doesn't.
Well, it'd have to be a five year, could be.
That's my point, uh, we need to. Michael, they go cheer the lease.
Yeah, and that, maybe it's two years, or, in case that, uh, it is decided to move out, we don't have to.
I mean, I would think that if we're going to move out, it would be, it would be an annex or something.
Yes.
If we don't have to.
Well, just wanted for everybody on the record, that way, we've already addressed everybody's concerns, the public, this is, uh, Lozano and everybody, so we'll continue the discussion, but you, so I guess we can't make any, uh, oh, we can discuss our options right now, like you said. So, the options, we can, we've discussed the options to stay there, or, or renegotiate the term and a lesser term, stay over there, or come over here, one or the other, we don't have any other options, we're the only two options. So, that's it, till we, till we touch base with Mr. Science, Mr. Lozano, and look at all the other, uh, and then we'll take it from there. Anybody else?
Do you have any suggestions, Mike?
Can, well, I guess we could go ahead and reach out to, uh, the management company, Tarantino Properties is the management company, uh, but Mr. Roger Science has communication with them. We can reach out to them and see what kind of offer they can make, is that, because the, the, the rent may change depending on the term of the, of the lease. The, the longer the lease, then generally, the better price you get, the shorter the lease, uh, sometimes it's a little bit higher. So, uh, maybe I can ask for a two, three, five-year, uh, option, and see what the price would be, bring that back, you all decide whether that's something you can afford and live with, or you want to look at other options.
Right, it's got to be affordable.
Right, right.
This is, this is a discussion, uh, action, uh, item.
Right.
I think that, in discussing it, I, I'd like to just say that Michael, uh, our, our county attorney should negotiate some, uh, bring something.
Some offers.
More solid, more.
Okay, okay, and see what they, what they would be willing to renew that.
Right.
Uh, would it be fair to you guys, you think it would be okay to bring in Mr. Lozano into the discussion?
Yeah. We're going to have both of them, Mr. Lozano and send the option.
Okay, and where do we, we convene back to your commissioners' court, or?
Yeah, we, yeah.
We only have ninety days.
So, we could put it back on the, uh, if they can get some, something in writing to us by, uh, the twenty-second, we can, we can bring it back up then. Um, I don't think that'll be a problem. I saw Mr. Science this morning, and he said he might have something for me, uh, later this afternoon. I said, well, we got to find out what, what exactly.
He doesn't talk to me, and you're going to negotiate, or who's going to negotiate?
Uh, if, if you want to do it, you, well, that's fine with me.
They, well.
It's not a, it's really not a negotiation, basically, we're going to get offers and bring them to you.
Right.
And then you, you, you all, as a court, Commissioners' Court, would then go back with a counter, or?
However, right, however we're working. What do you think, Jason?
Oh, I think, you know, it's got to be, the judge would have to be involved, he's in charge of billions.
If not, well, you know, however we want to do this, but we want to do it right, we want to make sure.
I just want it on the record, to make sure everybody is on the record, you know, because my position was to bring it back here to the courthouse, so I just want to make sure everybody else, that way the community and anyone else of concern can, uh, directly address each individual commissioner. That's what I'm going to give you, you know what I mean? So that way you all can explain.
Yeah, we, we need to weigh both options.
Sure, we'll weigh the options, that's why I want to be part of it, so I can know the details, so we can know what the factors are. We've already heard Judge Garcia, I want to hear Mrs. Lozano, in fairness, right?
You can, you can, Michael, and Mr. Lozano, and you just can be in that.
We can all, and Mr. Garrett, also, I want him there also because we have to, the terms and the legalities and the. Well, there hasn't been any issue with the, with the substance of the lease. Right. No, we're talking about its price and term. Right, that's all. And, yeah, so you could, I mean, you can handle that.
The only thing is that we have, the other concerns were security and other additional concerns.
An offset in location. Get, get Mr. Lozano there is not a problem.
And our employees.
It's the offset of the lease, that's what the concern is right now.
And why?
Yeah, but I'm bringing up the security issues and the employees and the safety of the, of the employees.
Yeah, that's a whole other issue.
That's a whole different issue.
Because there's a whole addendum that talks about control of premises being under, under the, the less, or not us.
Right.
So, I don't know that we can, even if we wanted to go in there and station and officer any type of security without getting some type of amendment to the, to, to the addendum to the lease.
To the addendum to the lease, yeah.
Yeah.
And that is something that's important for the safety of the employees, and the official there, and everyone else, and the, and the, uh, and the, the public. So, it has to be part of the negotiation, and part of the agreement, and part of substance in there that needs to be looked at. We have security here now, uh, and we have to look at that and address it, and if everybody, anybody disagrees, we'll bring it up now, about the security and the employees and the And if everybody, anybody disagrees, we'll bring it up now, about the security and the employees and the official over there. No, they need to.
As far as the public concerns, uh, they complain about this security because I've heard a lot of.
Well, good, well, we need to hear more because.
Of course, it's, it's our responsibility to secure our building.
Oh, yeah, uh, the thing is that whatever complaints or concerns, I get used to it, the public, because I've spoken to several individuals about it. They'll just get used to it, you know, I think. Mr. Garcia, Judge Garcia, you enjoy the security, haven't? We've had some.
I, I, absolutely enjoy it, I mean, I've had, I mean, not very many people know, but, I mean, I got accustomed in the, in the parking lot. Usually my available escorting to my vehicle.
Right.
I would say five, six weeks ago, I terminated the rights of some parents, which is probably worse than a capital murder case.
Sure.
And I got accustomed, I was walking.
And that was outside.
I was parked, I parked at the limousine office and I got accustomed by the mom and, I mean, it was like, I'd never been so scared in my life because, I mean, I terminated her rights and she no longer has kids.
Right.
And usually my family, my escort, and he took a day off, and then I was on myself and they said, well, the security has definitely been, uh, you know, the, the great concern when the.
Well, some of us have to make those calls that are life-changing.
Yeah, well, you know, that's, I'm the first one in the room.
Any parent and you handle those matters and those, and it's getting more and more sensitive.
And I say, you know, and actually I've done capital murders as a practicing lawyer and
Yeah.
somebody, taking someone's kids away is worse than a capital murder, I assure you, so.
Exactly.
You know, and another thing is, you know, the convenience, the safety, the well-being in the, uh, us accommodating the public is, you know, that, that concern has gotta be greater than us as public officials, you know, making sure they're safe, that they're comfortable.
That's what I was referring to earlier with the employees and the official.
You know, and I think that the general public, their safety is more important, I mean, them, their comfort and their well-being is more important than ours. You know, because we're, we serve them, you know.
I, I would like to see in the future that we open this with a scan and all that because sometimes, well, that's been the, that's been more the issue with the public is that they're elderly and they have to walk all the way because there's no parking over there. So they have to park over here and walk all the way.
Well, only because we're discussing this options about security, we've mentioned, you know, in the lease and the renewal of the lease or the term of the lease and the negotiation of it, and whatever is part of that law. So there's nothing in there about security or, or anything?
It's not, yeah, the way I read the lease, they're, they're, they retain control of all those issues, so that would, what does he have in mind?
Well, that's why in the discussion.
Because we've got doors on both ends, uh, so a, a.
I think there's instances, and, and that's a good point that the judge brings up about when it comes to child custody, child support, matters that the Texas Sister is now handling and sometimes it gets a pretty rowdy. Or then the denial, because of the old child support, the denial of your driver's license, is that still a concern? Is that still an issue?
I do know that there's times you can't renew your stamp, your, your, your registration stamp.
Or your license.
But I know that's more like when you've gone through tollways and haven't paid those tolls. I know renewing your driver's license for, but that would be done at the EPS office if they're.
Yeah, I'm saying the, the plates or.
Yeah, I think that's more dealing, I don't think that has anything to do with our court, I think it's dealing, more dealing with like traffic fines, um.
Child support.
Child, well, no, um, fines on tollways, I'm not really sure if you can renew your license plate because of child support. I do know.
You can't give back payment on.
I'm not sure, yeah.
Only because it's come up there and they deny it, these guys give it a little routing shit and all that, and there's nobody there to intervene, you know, so it's kinda like. License plate. Yep, the renewal of the registration of vehicles, they deny it when you owe, I believe.
For child support.
I think you could sign up to it, said that.
Yes. So that makes an issue sometimes that they're not, they're not equipped to handle these rowdy individuals, but I've seen some of them. Then I'll send them y'all's way if you'd like, so next time. If they call on me, I'll send them, that way they can have, and that'll, there'll be more of that interaction with the public soon. Because pretty rarely they wanna have some clarification on some matters, so anything else, Commissioners?
All I can say is, I've been up here, when you're having court, you see nothing but orange suits in the hallway. And that even tends to, should I go through there or is it okay, I'll go around. Can you imagine the parents and the people that are trying to get through the hallway, fight through all those? And that room is basically half full, I haven't looked in there. But the, the officers are there to patrol, but I'm just saying those halls are too narrow.
As long as we make it clear to everyone involved and so they can see and understand that, uh, we have a lot of traffic. And that's it, just bring it up, because right now, from what I understood, they have this understanding that they can come back, the employees and the official, and there was an option there, there was a talk about that, so. As long as we clarify that, I mean, that's all that is important, is so they can understand they, if it's not possible and everything has been, uh, looked at and considered.
And then you have the prisoners.
You have traffic and everything else. That way, well, we'll sit down and do that with, uh, Ms. Lozano and, and, uh, everyone else involved.
I don't know who's gonna work on the lease, but whoever does, you know, we, we need to know something soon.
Well, Mr. Gano will work out the technicalities and the legal aspects of it, all the terms and all that. And some of us will negotiate the other terms and to consider all those other matters that we have to consider, so.
You can just let him know that they have a, a concern with security. Of course, I'm sure if he has to provide security, he's gonna.
That's an effect of the.
There might be something, you know, to add to the lease, you know?
And then we wanna provide, uh, security.
Well, I think all you can do would be to provide a person, because I don't think we can put scanners.
No, they're not that type of, I, I guess that's why it's, it, you know, it can be, uh, different range of security. A body or, or however, whatever it is that, uh, I need to hear, does anybody know their concerns over there or anybody?
I've never heard.
Nobody's even talked to them over there.
Well, since we're talking about security and about, about the tax office, you also gotta remember Orange Grove.
Satellite offices, yeah.
She's complaining about that also.
Yep. So you're aware of Commissioner that she's complaining about it?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, or she's, she's made it clear that.
Yeah, and she's worried about.
And so.
And she's a prisoner of constable and, and employee shows.
So, so there isn't, uh, there isn't a lot of concern. So we don't wanna consider any of those, uh, those factors?
Well, we gotta look at all the factors.
Okay, well, okay, I don't, I think this is enough on this topic for now. Till we reconvene again at the twenty-something, that we can get some kind of, we can convene and.
Talk about some kind of security. Because I really don't think we have the room to come back. I mean, that's the reason they moved it, because we had, we were having problems with, with all the people in the hall and, and no parking. And that has to change.
Yes.
I, I was just curious, do, do they even have panic buttons over there?
Yeah, they got, they got.
Let me comment, so they can push us to see what works. I do that every now and then.
Because we don't have panic.
Look, I need you all to panic, but we're supposed to have a panic button. We'll be ready to.
Sure, is there a way that we can get a panic button? Because we don't have a panic button.
Yes.
We, we just did, we, uh.
There's a specific place. For your office? Yes. Just give me a call. Come on. Any, any other discussion, more discussion?
So at this time, we're going to just not.
Well, it's just a discussion item today.
It's a discussion.
No more discussion?
Do you think you can get something for us, uh, by the next meeting?
I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to them and try to see what they can provide. Uh, the security issue of the judge, if you could sit in on that, that's gonna be a.
I'm just trying to do like our job and respond to some of these concerns and then, you know, uh, if it does work out, if it doesn't, as long as we have all the matters and factors discussed and brought up.
And I just wanna point out that the budget for next year past the current, what we pay right now.
All right, so we're gonna move along to agenda item number fifteen. Consider and take actions about the resolution, cash fees in Los County. One thousand seven hundred and fifty votes for one of more candidates for the Jimos County Rapid District Board of Directors.
Okay, can I speak on this, uh, judge?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, uh, we have seventeen, seventeen fifty votes. Our candidates are Willis Burginson and Madre Resio. I would like to, uh, give Madre Resio, uh, eight hundred and thirty-six votes that qualifies him automatically. Mr. Burginson, I'd like to give him three hundred and eleven. Orange Grove, if it's in the school district, gonna give him four eighty-five. Sidney of Orange Grove is gonna give him forty, that would give him eight thirty-six. I'd like to give, uh, Noel Atkinson, three forty-one.
I'm sorry, sir, what was the number for Mr. Burginson?
Three eleven.
Three eleven.
And Mr. Noel Atkinson, three forty-one. Brent Star, uh, Brent Star, two sixty-two, that would be a total of seventeen fifty.
Commissioner, I'll make, I'll second a motion. Okay, is that a motion?
Yeah.
I have a motion to second on the floor, all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
All of opposed? Motion passes.
Did you guys have numbers? Two sixty-two. Seventy-seven, fifty, right?
Okay. Yeah. Okay, we got the numbers correct? All you gotta do is submit those numbers.
Well, I'll drop the resolution and, and get everybody to, because Sidney usually wants it in the form of a resolution.
All right, that'll be done today?
I can get it done Saturday.
It's gonna be done before Friday?
Oh, no, this week, I think we have till December, I think we have till December.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mike, for that. Do you want, uh, since you, some of y'all might be gone, can, can we just get the judge and JC to attest to it? Or do all of y'all wanna sign off on it? Okay, well, then just know that you're gonna have to come by at some point in the seventh minute. I guess Linda can let you know when it's ready. Thank you. So we're gonna include everybody, we're gonna sign, right? Everybody's ready? Okay. All righty, uh, number sixteen, discuss and consider request by Simran Engineering for installation of road bore crossing to be located as follows from intersection of Highway two eighty-one South and Farm Road six twenty-five. Go two point one miles on FM six twenty-five west and turn south on County Road four sixty-three for one point two mile site to site of road bore.
Good morning, Honorable Judge.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Newman with Simran Engineering. We drilled a gas well located off FM six thirty-five, excuse me, six twenty-five, about a half a mile on the east side of County Road four sixty-three. Our plan now is to lay a two-inch pipeline going parallel on the east side of County Road four sixty-three, which we're at, at this time negotiating with the landowner to go seven tenths of a mile, to which at point we need to turn and go under, go under County Road four sixty-three to energy transfer, this happens located on the west side. Now, there is an abandoned enterprise line, which I met with them yesterday, that runs parallel with County Road four sixty-three, that's about thirty feet off the pavement. They have given us permission, we're gonna, when we do do this bore, we're gonna excavate that abandoned pipeline. They're telling us it's a three and a half, look, it's approximately four to five feet deep. Our plan is to go set up our work pit about fifteen to twenty feet to the east of that. We're gonna go two feet under them, which will put us between six and seven feet going under County Road FM four sixty-three to a, uh, work pit on the other side, which we're also negotiating with that landowner. So basically, we will be running a two-inch Schedule eighty, which there's some specs that are attached, uh, on the pipeline that we're gonna be running under there. And, uh, we will contract a company called Tracker Services out of Sutton to actually do the bore. And then what we'll do is we'll, before we, uh, bore, we will put a similar pipe about a hundred and twenty feet, weld it, test it to fifteen hundred, charge it, and then once we bore it, what they'll do is they'll pull it out through as they're pulling their pipe out through there, and we'll have, uh, thirty-two pound magnesium anode bags on each end of that pipe for protection of the pipe. They'll also have markers with identifying Simran Engineering and our emergency contact number.
Sounds good, works out with it. We just, we just paved that road there about, uh, three weeks.
Right.
And I, I can't, technically, I can't tell you not to go over it with any, any traffic.
Oh, no.
Even though we've had a lot of calls already for some.
No.
But if you can't say some.
Right, what we'll do is, we will take the track machine, they will pull the goose neck off the road.
Good deal.
We'll be on that side, the backhoe would be the only thing.
Yeah, I find that's a bit of a.
That's minimal, what's the mind, yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
And, uh, yeah, that, and like I say, we will bore it, well, they'll take their bit off, they'll attach to the pipe and just pull it back through as they retract their pipe. And then from that point on, everything is on the landowner property.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, I was just wondering, is there a fee that needs to be paid for this?
Five hundred dollars.
And do you have the check with you?
I do.
You have it?
I have a check with, I have it with me because I don't know who to make it out to because there was some, whether it would go to the precinct.
Uh, the Honor Trust Office gets it and then we'll make sure that it's precinct.
Okay, who will get it?
Honor Trust Office, my office.
Okay.
And then we'll make sure that, uh, whatever precinct it's in, we have a line.
Okay, so I'll leave the, the line at the top or?
Jimos County.
Yes, Jimos County?
Yeah, and, uh, we'll make sure it gets put in the right.
Okay.
Put it under attention, precinct four.
How put, uh, road bore, County Road four sixty-three?
No, no, and you'll get the money. Oh, we'll be waiting. Thank you, sir, thank you, Mr. Newman, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we already passed this.
Do you have a motion? There's, there's not a problem with, uh, Mr. Wilson?
No, I can allow you, sir.
I make a motion to.
A motion to second on the floor, most papers say aye?
Aye.
All of opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda number fifteen, consider take action to assign an interview committee to conduct interviews with application received for vacant positions, safety officer, and the ninety-one-one aggressive that follows the Fisher's project with County Organization chart list. Final decision should be made by.
I would like to.
How would it be for, uh, you're, you're nominating Cindy? I'll, I'll nominate JC. Somebody wants to nominate somebody.
Well, the judge.
The judge can't be in.
Oh, he can't.
He can't nominate somebody.
Well, uh, how does that work?
Is there ever maybe making the decision?
Anybody nominates or is it just open, is it open-ended or?
I think it was, uh, the last time we did this was for the veterans officer and I think we just opened the floor for nominations and I don't, I know Cindy was on and JC. Who was the third person?
Cindy. Oh, uh. Where's the man?
No one.
No, he, right here.
Wasn't it the veteran officer?
No, veteran, it was, uh.
It was a veteran officer?
We haven't looked yet.
Oh, yeah, he was still on there.
Go ahead, get, get me the.
Check it out.
And Jimos County.
Thank you.
We made that, that change, uh, permanent.
Number seventeen, consider take action to assign an interview committee to conduct interviews with application received for vacant positions, safety officer, and the ninety-one-one aggressive that follows the Fisher's project with County Organization chart list. Final decision should be made by.
First, we wanted Cindy.
I would like to. How would it be for, uh, you're, you're nominating Cindy? And, uh, I'll, I'll nominate JC. Somebody wants to nominate somebody.
Well, the judge.
The judge can't be in.
Oh, he can't.
He can't nominate somebody.
Well, uh, how does that work?
Is there ever maybe making the decision?
Anybody nominates or is it just open, is it open-ended or?
I think it was, uh, the last time we did this was for the veterans officer and I think we just opened the floor for nominations and I don't, I know Cindy was on and JC. Who was the third person?
Cindy. Oh, uh. Where's the man?
No one.
No, he, right here.
Wasn't it the veteran officer?
No, veteran, it was, uh.
It was a veteran officer?
We haven't looked yet.
Oh, yeah, he was still on there.
Go ahead, get, get me the.
Check it out.
And Jimos County.
And of course.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Both those employees are gone now, so that, that wouldn't be an issue, but we need a third name.
I wanna mention something, and I, I don't, I don't need to be, uh, rude or anything, but anybody here, but I like to get more people involved that are not elected officials, that are not the same people over and over in every committee, and it always seems like it's the same people, so. No offense to anybody, I would like to see we can get other people involved that are not elected officials, because I don't like the fact that you're elected and few people feel, well, you know.
Yeah, well.
It's getting all that out of the way, you can know people that are, every day, people from your office that are not elected.
Yeah, we're just talking.
I'm waiting, I would like to suggest, if anybody, Sylvia Aramea should be involved, she's gonna be in her office, she's gonna be, she's gonna be working directly with that person.
I disagree, I don't think somebody from that office should be on that.
Well, if you're gonna work with, with that person, I would like to have somebody you're, you're comfortable working with, and if you're.
Commissioner, yeah.
Maybe somebody, somebody at you.
Yeah, and I agree with Commissioner Lozano to an extent, because what is the overall, what is the overall, uh, I guess, endgame here, I mean, if he wants to nominate people that are gonna nominate someone to fill it, for what reason? They don't have any supervision or any kind of authority.
They don't have any supervision or any kind of authority over these people. Uh.
But they're only gonna.
The recommendations.
Because they're, at the end, they only recommend so many people that they come to us, right?
Last time, there, there was a number of applicants, they, the committee narrowed it down to two, and those two names were brought before the court, and the two applicants, uh, were given some time to make a pitch.
That, that's what the, uh, agenda item says, you know, it'll come before us.
Right, after the recommendation from. And Cindy, do you have a, since they always throw you into the mix, do you have a problem?
No, I don't have a problem, I, normally the role that I play is, I, um, have been this training and so forth for HR, so I, I conduct the, uh, the interview I start, I love the interviewing and the process, um, I have the questions in place, depending on the particular position that you're hiring for.
You also look into, like, credentials?
And, yeah, and they're kind of screen on the applicant.
So that's why we wanna make that clear, that you're on that committee, not that particular.
So I kind of, yeah, oversee it, and then, um, of course, whoever two people, other two people y'all nominate.
Okay.
So I kind of let them know.
So why is it that I'm excluded, Commissioner, from the?
Because we're gonna vote on it.
Okay.
We're gonna have to vote on the, on the two individuals that they, that against.
Right.
That would be, you know, I mean, you can certainly be on it, I just don't think it would be, uh, something that you're gonna have to make a vote on, you're gonna have to.
I don't mind, that's what I'm saying, but if I'm precluded, precluded from this for legal reasons, if not, I don't mind being on the committee.
There, there's no legal reason, but, but, uh, it, the reason that, that it hasn't been done in the past is to avoid the, the, the situation where somebody comes and they've already got one vote, they've already got one out of the five already, because.
I, I.
By the very fact that you'd recommend.
It actually is true.
But actually, you're recommending two, so.
So there should not be no, not recommending one.
I do think that, that, having a, a co-employee is not a good idea. Because of the structure, and it might, it might be okay if you had the supervisor assisting and choosing somebody that they would be overseeing, but not the other way around.
Right.
Cause remember, the, the position this nominee has is, is subordinate to the safety officer. So I don't think it's a good idea in this, in this situation. As far as you, the, the judge, you know, we, we just avoided that in the past. I think, though, didn't we have a commissioner on one time? No? It's always been J C and Cindy and a third, and a third person.
And she was, that's the key word, it's always been. So I feel it's a disadvantage to some people, if, if it's always been the same people. So you, some people may feel, well, I don't know, I don't have, I don't have a chance.
Oh, and we.
Well, we're not gonna make it.
Well, we're not going, yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to be fair.
We're looking at, and, and for my, for, for all intensive purposes and for, for, uh, from my part, I'll be supervising these people.
Right.
And that is the issue there, and if nobody understands that, you know, that, that, we have to be involved in the, you know, I wanna, the character, the credentials, the workability of this person, and being able to judge the, 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 in the past, there've been some disastrous choices, to be honest with you. And the choices have been made, for the most part, you know, uh, so far, we've been okay, but from my point of view, some of these decisions haven't been made. And I have plenty of, there's plenty of, of, uh, and who made, and we, if we go back in history and look at the recommendations and who approved what, and it doesn't mean that once we make a recommendation and they hire a person, that we cannot relook at these individuals' conduct, activity, their behavior, uh, their background, and consider all of those things. This is a, we're supposed to be a professional organization here, but we don't want it to become, again, an issue, because it was an issue before I got on, where there was a lot of concerns and, and the way certain individuals, the way they processed, the way the committee chose certain people, certain things. So if we wanna get back into that, I don't think anybody wants to be involved in that without looking at all the aspects of, of, of hiring. And I understand Cindy, she just takes care of the vetting and the background, but we don't want to make this thing, uh, for various reasons. And this is just the beginning, like I said, we had discussed this before on different matters, but we don't want it to become, uh, one of those matters where, you know, we have people, uh, that are, uh, taking on individuals without really doing a background check and then holding them accountable. Because I will hold them accountable.
I'm gonna add something.
Everybody's gonna be responsible, whoever recommends that.
Well, I mean, we could make it a four, uh, committee, it doesn't have to be three, we could have a judge and add somebody else.
I, I, I can, I can add to, I guess, Michael, what I'm trying to say is that, when I mentioned Sylvia as that, that person, and in the, and I'll go back to the past, I was here, people got, put in a spot here, you're gonna work with this person, and I don't agree with that. You know, you're, you're putting somebody there, I don't even know, you don't even know your work style or stuff like that. So you gotta get somebody, maybe Sylvia's not the right person to be in there, but if the judge is gonna oversee that supervisor, then, then he should be involved in this.
Can we do it on an extracurricular basis?
You're gonna have, I'm already getting somebody recommended it. Or you, you know, I don't even know your background, how you work or anything. So, I mean, I wouldn't wanna be given somebody, somebody appointed to me, this, who is this person? Because, I agree, in the past, we've had, the choices were not the best in the world, and we paid the price for it, and, and it's cost us a lot.
And there are instances, there are instances, and there's, but we move beyond that, like I said, we just wanna improve the process and the procedures. Just improve it and make it more transparent.
Uh, if you all want to be in the committee, I'll be in the committee, but I already have one from my office.
Yeah, I heard, I heard, they're trying to exclude her.
No, I'm not excluding, I'm not excluding. You know, she's not an elected official, I, I, without disrespect or surprise, you know, I'm not trying to pick on anything, it's just that I, we need to change the, the system.
No, Cindy's not trying to be excluded, Cindy's a very integral part of the field because of her resources and her background and, and her training and being. Throw what, HR.
I don't wanna say the right thing right now or not, uh, but before, when you say some of the people were not the best choices, most of those were not done under this process. You know, they were done.
Politically.
I could say that.
Well, you could say, I mean, I mean, I mean, that.
No, but we didn't have, this, this process should have been followed, this didn't even was followed, but a lot of those employees that you're saying, this just came into play not too long ago.
Right.
We looked at it, this is a process that should be done, uh, and, you know, there's only certain people that have been hired under this.
Probably doesn't want.
Okay, no, okay, no, but you're saying, you're saying that this was never done, just now?
Well, it was brought up, it was brought up by the district judge, that he said it was done incorrectly, uh, he wanted it changed, he brought.
So this change came about when?
Oh, uh.
Like last year.
Last year.
But that's not a point.
No, 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 but I'm trying to say that if, if, they just made the change, that it was never done in the past. You know, it, it, it doesn't make, it doesn't sound right.
Halfway from peak terms, it's when it happens.
But either, either way, whatever happened in the previous administration, whatever happened, we wanna do it properly, correct, and we wanna be transparent, and we wanna be fair, and we wanna be professional, we don't wanna just like a, like another third rate.
But maybe one of the deputies, like maybe Felix Sines on the.
What's that? Yes. You know, I was thinking about that, because I do have some, you know, we always hire people, and, uh, our administration is very qualified, and of course, they're not elected. Uh, I've got three individuals, matter, we got some interviews this morning, but, uh, they're qualified to do interviews. So you select one of them, either Aguilar, Valdez, or Barrera.
And, and I think that, you know, the judgment's a good point, he's gonna be the one supervising them. It, it, this isn't the choice, basically, you're just splitting them down into two, and still have to come before the commission. So maybe, and the sheriff's department, sheriff brings up a good point, they're the biggest department, they have the most change, the turnover, they have the most employee, uh, employee turnover. So they do have some people that, that have experience with that. Cindy's trained in HR, that, that's probably your three, uh, choices, uh, good choices, I think.
And if I manage to get a, a nine-one-one, has a lot to do with our law enforcement, so that would also give us access to communicate with that individual and, and kind of show them for those locations and meet the, get numbers assigned and have that relationship.
Are you okay with Felix Sines being on?
Felix Sines would also be one of my administrators.
Who, who are the others, Sheriff?
Me, Captain Barrera, Chief Valdez, uh, Lieutenant Aguilar, Lieutenant Sines, Lieutenant Waldr.
That's a good point you bring up, Sheriff, since the nine-one-one operator was stationed at your office prior to that, right?
Yes, sir.
And for what reason, they should have never been brought over to this facility here, because we have like three or four different, in one room, literally, departments? Three or four, minimum. And that doesn't work out very well when we have, uh, and, I don't know why they were brought over, they used to be stationed at your office, correct?
Yes, sir.
What happened there, or do you know what the reason was, or why? Because that's, that makes sense, that they have access to, to and from with your people, to be able to identify those properties and have that access to those.
Exactly.
To the resources. So when that was done, that was a bad move, and so we wanna correct that, you know? And we need to look at that, because in one, literally, we have one office where we have three or four different departments, for different duties and responsibilities. And that doesn't work out very well at all. Trust me, from my, from my observation experience, that doesn't work at all. So we need to look at that.
Well, but we just get nine-one-one, none of the duties.
Let's, let's, let a, a committee, as hell, we can discuss, or he's gonna be situated, okay?
Yeah, sure, and I'll be on the committee, Cindy and then Lieutenant Sines.
My staff's available, sir.
Alright, so that's your recommendation, you move?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to second, all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
All of the opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, good discussion. An alternate, you wanna be on, a little bit, Commissioner, as an alternate?
A law coach?
Yeah, just in case one of us. Can we do that, as an alternate?
Maybe we should choose another one, maybe we, we need to go with four.
Yeah, no, another, yeah, Mr. Barrera. Okay. Okay, Mr. Gano, no, we'll leave that, that, that's just discussion after.
We need to, yeah, we don't wanna.
And the judge.
Okay.
Yeah, the judge, Cindy, you speak with.
Alright, uh, that's it, right? Consider payroll and bills submitted by county auditor. We didn't vote, okay, I move that, uh, that we, uh, second a motion.
You just, did you do one?
No, we need for, I'll, I'll favor.
Okay, so we have a motion to second on the floor, all of the papers?
Aye.
All of the opposed? Motion passes. Consider payroll and bills submitted by the county auditor. Auditor, anything in order?
Yes.
Good. I move that we, uh, we accept the vote.
Oh, y'all haven't looked at it yet? This is gonna be looked at when you get the.
Agenda.
Well, that's what we got here. Okay. No, I'm serious, not here, you, that's why you can see agenda. Okay, then, I mean. You have, you make the motion. Yes.
The bill?
No.
Oh. You're putting, putting this, put on the website, discuss, build on it. It's all made available.
Well, we've always said it this way.
We've always done it, now we're gonna do this, where I move that we pass the payroll and bills submitted by county auditor. Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
I have a second.
Exception?
Fifty-two, fifty-three, with the exceptions. All of the papers say aye?
Aye.
All of the opposed? Motion passes, thank you, everyone, I have a motion to adjourn. I have a second, and all of the papers say aye.
Aye.